We have State Representative Carol Hall, Tom Arnon, and Senator Kissel. Senator Kissel, you're welcome to come up. You're the only one here in the audience if you'd like to come up. And I think by remote, because both are down at the Capitol, I think could get. So I think just preface they could be called into session at any point. So they're not being rude if they have to leave. It's because they may have to go, right? You may have to go vote. So that's why you may have to leave at any time. So, welcome, Representative Hall, Representative Arnon, and Senator Kissel. I will turn the floor over to you, Representative Hall.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, you can. Okay. We don't use Teams, so it's a little different format that Tom and I are used to using. So I apologize. Anyway, good evening, everybody. I'm excited to be here. Tom and I are obviously at the Capitol tonight. It's going to be a long one here tonight, I have a feeling. But anyway, to the issue at hand. I'm really happy to be here to kind of talk to you a little bit about the efforts to attempt to do a Rails-to-Trail program along the freight line on the eastern part of Enfield. And I think everybody in the room is probably very familiar with the track that we're talking about. And we're specifically looking at the piece that goes from East Windsor up to the Massachusetts State Line and East Long Meadow. So basically, we're looking at two towns to do this Rails-to-Trail effort. And the reason we kind of reached out to East Windsor is the freight line has one or two clients that are basically in the same spot in East Windsor, which is in the southern part of East Windsor. So the freight line actually has a client down there. And when we talked to East Windsor about this effort, they were extremely excited about it and felt that it could be done very easily, right up to the present client's spot. So they actually drafted, the town of East Windsor drafted a letter of support from their Board of Selectmen in this effort to do a Rails-to-Trail. I'm trying to give you like a chronological order of the way things happen. We had two meetings with DOT over the past year. One was last year during COVID, or right before. We were in the thick of things and had a discussion. We had some council members involved in that discussion. And then we did have another meeting as well with DOT. And basically, at that point, we felt like there was a good amount of support. So we, Senator Kissel, myself, Senator Anwar, and actually Representative Foster, who was going to sign on to the letter but just got back to us too late. So I had a nice conversation with Representative Foster, and she's in support of the Rails-to-Trail effort as well. So it certainly is a very bipartisan effort right across the board. And we are really hopeful that Enfield will sign on to a letter of support and resolution for this Rails-to-Trails. Just a little history on the track. I know a lot of you folks are very familiar with the history on this track. It's been leased from the state of Connecticut over the last 25 years from one particular gentleman. This particular Leacy wanted another 20-year lease on this track. And we have some good news, really good news, I would consider it. We got a letter from DOT late Friday night stating that they only gave the lease to the Leacy for a year. And the reason they stated they didn't give him a 20-year lease, which he was looking for, is they actually were looking to engage town officials and discuss what could be done with the possibility of the bike path and the freight line itself. So, great news. DOT heard us and is ready to listen to what the municipalities would like to see along that line. And I think that's a quick kind of overview. I'm trying to look at my notes to see if I missed anything. I don't think so. I think that's about everything. I'm gonna, I'll be happy to take questions after Tom and John talk. But that's where we are with the efforts to date.
Thank you, Representative Hall. We'll open up the questions after everyone gets a chance to speak. So I want to make sure. So Senator Kissel, we'll go to you last since you're in the room. Representative Arnon, I hope you can hear me. Welcome, and you have the floor, sir. Sorry, Representative, I think you're on mute, sir.
Paul, is that on his end or our end? Can you help?
Think the mic, I don't think the mic is working on this end.
Tom, I don't know if you can hear us. Paul believes it's the mic on your end. I see you're nodding. I don't know if there's a workaround to this.
Maybe try signing out and signing back in, Representative Arnon?
If you see the three dots, if you press the three dots, it gives you an option for device settings, and that might be where your microphone settings are. Some people get that, some people don't.
Good news, we're good on time. We're good on time right now, so no, we get, we.
Tom, try hitting the, running your mouse over the bottom of the screen. See if you can get the toolbar to come up.
Representative Arnon, we'll cut to you right when you're on. We're going to go to Senator Kissel. But just let, are you on now? All right, got it. So Senator Kissel, you have the floor. But you know, I don't mean to be rude if Tom comes back on and then we'll just come back to you, but you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, no, you won't be rude at all. First of all, congratulations to Town Manager Bromson. I saw that he re-upped for another year. So that's good for the town of Enfield. And I just want to say hello to all of you. It's great to be here in person. We've been all locked down for a long time. I guess you've been up and running here in the council chambers for a while, but it's my first time being here since things have relaxed a little bit. You guys have some interesting choices ahead of you. Certainly, I have walked the, I have walked the rail line with Scott Copin, Mike Emmons, some others. And essentially, the East Long Meadow portion is already a Rails-to-Trail. And when I walked it, it was probably about a year and a half, almost two years ago. I'm not an expert, but it did look like the accumulation of the ties that were sort of stacked next to the line had been there for many years. I don't want to criticize the current lessor of the rail line, but it just didn't seem like a lot of activity was going on anytime recently. It's my understanding, I had a nice conversation with Frank Troiano yesterday. He's laid a lot of groundwork for a proposal that he has. I'm sure the members of the council are aware of that. The advantage with Mr. Troiano is that he lives right here in town, so he's not like someone from far away. Not that that's always a negative. But I think when someone is an accomplished businessperson within your community, it sort of adds credibility to whatever proposal they have. I'm on board with Carol. We co-signed the letter to the Department of Transportation, looking for them to consider a Rails-to-Trail proposal. In those discussions, I will share that the Department of Transportation said that in at least one other venue, if not more, there has been a mixed use that's been authorized by the Department of Transportation for both limited use of the commercial rail line for commercial purposes, as well as adjoining a Rails-to-Trail portion, and safety is maintained. And so they've been successful in mixed use. And so if you're struggling with this, I would ask you to consider that there's potentiality for compromise. Not that I want to like diminish from my initial position. That's probably not a good negotiation position to take. But the towns in North Central Connecticut that I've been blessed enough to represent, and Enfield's certainly not the least of which, are pragmatic, and they like to try to accommodate the needs of everybody in the community for both economic development as well as passive use recreation and things of that nature. So I would urge you to use your best judgment regarding this. I think there's a lot of advantages to linking up with East Long Meadow with their Rails-to-Trail proposal. Certainly, it's an area that had not been developed recently, in recent years, that I could see. But again, I was not aware of this other business potentiality coming down the road. And of course, you have to take that into careful consideration as well. I stand ready, willing, and able to do whatever I can. Please use me and my office as a resource. Sorry, Tom and Carol, I do believe Kate McAvoy is the best legislative aide in the state of Connecticut, but I'm biased. But we are ready to help every member of this council, Republican, Democrat, unaffiliated, whatever. I don't think there's any of those guys out here. But, you know, I think there's a lot of potential here in any number of directions for the town of Enfield, and it's exciting. As with so many other ventures by the town of Enfield, you've got a lot of options, and the town is really moving in a very positive direction. And I want to commend each and every one of you for your selfless efforts on behalf of the town of Enfield in this difficult time. And you have continued tirelessly moving this town forward despite the headwinds. And I'm really proud to live here in the town of Enfield and represent the folks of North Central Connecticut. And I stand ready, willing, and able. And Tom, I would always say, where are those Democratic staffers to just jump in and get that volume going? That's all. And I say that with the kindness of intentions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And Representative Hall, I mean, sorry, Representative Arnon, I apologize, sir. Can you, does it work?
He's frozen. He's also trying to log on on another computer.
All right, so we could perhaps go around.
So open up the questions and then.
He says let him in. Paul, let him in.
Go ahead, Chris.
We'll try to get him in. And John, I echo your comments, and I thank you. I thank Carol and Tom. This is the most responsive legislative group in the state. And I send emails or phone calls, and I hasten to say they're almost instantaneously answered, that they're very responsive to the town of Enfield. We appreciate that.
Paul, please let Representative Arnon in, please.
I will, I'll wait. I don't have him waiting in the lobby as of yet.
So, one second.
Paul will make, he'll monitor it and try to get him in before we leave.
So we open up the questions again, and when, again, when Representative Arnon can get online, we'll cut right to him.
I'd like to just.
Before we open up, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, this has been a very collaborative effort. And the council, we came a little late to the game because Senator Kissel, Carol Hall, and Tom Arnon, he had been working on this. I remember the meeting before COVID, Carol, upstairs with DOT officials to discuss this. So it's been a work in progress. I will say, most recently, we were on a phone call a few weeks ago with Senator Kissel and Carol, and believe me, they ably and very forcefully convey the position of our residents in these meetings with state officials. There's no doubt as to where they stand. And I echo Carol. It's not a coincidence that this lease that heretofore has been renewed probably for 25 years at a time. The Commissioner, our good friend Joe Giletti, renewed it for one year. And the last paragraph, we're going to take him up on this, Carol and John, and we will avail ourselves of using Kate. He said that while we're working towards this, even though they're going to renew it, that they will entertain another meeting with us to discuss. Just what John said, the Deputy Commissioner, Garrett Ucalito, is on the project, and he shared with me as well, Senator, that they're willing to do both of these if they can. So we shouldn't wait. We should start the process, because both of them will take time. We'll have to identify financing for a trail either way, whether the freight line's abandoned or whether we do it, you know, at the same time. So the sooner the better. So we'll reach out and start that conversation. And in a year, if they renew it, then we'll try to put this next to it. And in a year, if they don't, we'll try to put it right down the middle of the tracks. So again, I thank all of you for your efforts for the residents. I can tell you, and the council can echo, that this is probably one of the issues we've gotten more phone calls on, John, that people are just so excited about all of the new bike trails in town, other recreational efforts that we're going to pass later in this budget. And this certainly has really sparked a lot of excitement in people who want to get out there and walk, such as you did last year. So we thank you for your efforts. And Tom, are you there? Because you're going to start thinking, this is personal if I don't get you on here.
Welcome. You have, go ahead, welcome. You have, go ahead, you have the floor, sir.
I had totally switched computers. My apologies. Like I said, we're not so used to this format. But yeah, so I, you know, at first I was, I went to the first meeting with Carol. You know, I'm a great proponent of bike trails. I bike trail myself. Just bought a new bike to go with my daughter. I know Enfield lacks hiking, biking trails, and we just had a regional meeting on, the one that's on board with Thompsonville right now. I know we had state funding for that particular rail, or that particular bike trail. So at first, I was really on board with this. And I went to the first meeting with Carol and, you know, heard DOT out. And I had actually walked the rail. I took pictures. I brought pictures with me on what I thought was, you know, the rail being in just a mess. I was corrected immediately by DOT that, you know, that this rail is a freight line. Freight lines, actually, our freight line looked pretty good compared to the, some of the ones he said he had seen in the state of Connecticut. And that they had replaced every fourth rail, which put it into a workable trail. So I was a little taken aback by that at the time, and just brushed it off. I was still, really would like to see some, the trail there. And then, within a couple of days, I heard about the biofuel and the chance that now there is a viable client for this rail line. You know, so the biofuel is a, it's corn, corn oil. It's Western corn oil, same stuff you fry with. Comes out of the Midwest, comes out in tankers. They just start blending it with home heating oil. The reason why they blend it with the home heating oil is to try to make some renewable energy out of, out of home heating oil. And it's part of a wider plan to reduce our dependencies on fossil fuel. And that contract will probably be, you know, one of the first in the state of Connecticut. So it's pretty exciting. So, you know, I had then turned my attention to is, we were offered in the first meeting a chance to negotiate both. And that's where I stand right now and today. And with all due respect to Carol, I think she's pushed this initiative to where it needs to be now. It needs, we need to have more of these trails in Enfield. And I'm, you know, I'll do everything I can to get some kind of negotiation going. I've already asked, reached out to DOT and asked them if we could start negotiating a trail next to the train line if there is a viable client on that train line. And, you know, then I started doing some research, and, you know, our industrial park on the north end of Enfield is, really has quite a bit of acreages. Wind Stanley, for instance, you know, they're sitting on 302 acres of prime industrial property at the end of this rail line. And I'd like to really talk to Wind Stanley. I know they've been a great partner with Enfield. They, you know, they've saved the Hallmark Building and turned it into warehouses. And warehouses are the up and coming thing for industrial parks, you know. And even, there's another 300 acres that are viable industrial lines in that area. So, and I think the trail line may be of some use to selling those properties. So I'd like to see both. I would like to start negotiations with the state to make sure we can have both. And many places in the state, they have biking trails next to either rail lines. And one in particular in Southern Connecticut is right next to a high-speed rail line. If you go down Route, Route 2 and Route 390, 384, there's bike trails right alongside the highway. So, you know, they can live in harmony with each other. And I'd like to kind of start negotiating out with the state. So that's it. I thank you for your time today, and still total support of bike trails in Enfield.
Thank you. We're going to open up the questions, and then at the end, hopefully have enough time you guys can make a, you know, comment. Councilors Farazah.
Is Lori Whitten on, Chris? Lori, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am.
I have a question for you, Lori.
Yeah.
To what extent have you reached out? Mr. Arnon, he just said there's 300 acres of industrial land there. Have you reached out to any of the businesses there? And has any of them expressed interest in, down the road, with a project like this?
I have spoken with Representative from Wind Stanley Enterprises, and they are very interested in the freight line. I haven't reached out to anybody else at this time.
Okay. And, you know, and this is a question, because I don't know the answer to this. I did a little research today, and I found out that there's a difference between biofuel. It's in two different sections. There's biodiesel and biofuel. The biodiesel isn't what's being proposed here. It's biofuel. And my research shows that that's predominantly farming crops, corn, soybean, and sugarcane. So I believe the state and the U.S. Energy Department says that that's nontoxic, not a hazardous material. So my question is simply this. As the person that tries to encourage businesses to Enfield, if you have 300 acres and there's a company proposing to put up a site, and they can come here, or they could go to another town, to what extent, in your opinion, Lori, does rail service availability increase the value and the prospect for encouraging future business growth in Enfield?
From an economic development standpoint, I certainly feel that the.
Yes, economic development, yes.
Yes. The freight line would be very important to a business. You know, the opportunities are way more available to receive shipments of, whether it's biofuels or any other product. And it can be a less expensive opportunity.
And it could be, and it could be the game changer. Sometimes it could be the breaking point between coming here or another town.
Absolutely.
And I think we all agree, we want more businesses in town. We want to build our grand list. And I think, just quickly, and I'm not going to opine on this much further, but doing a little bit more research today, I was surprised to see, one of the problems in town is we've always had the tractor-trailer trucks coming up North Road to all the distribution centers. And what I'm finding now that a single freight train, and this is from the National League of Cities, can carry the load of several hundred trucks. Every year, freight railroads move more than 122 million truckloads from our roads. So if there's a potential to cut back on tractor-trailer trucks because it's more economical for the freight train and it gets the trucks off the road, that would be obviously an advantage. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I guess I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure. You know, I know the passenger line is a subsidized line. So do we know what kind of subsidies the freight trains would have? Should the line be established? How much subsidy would we have? Because a two, three-car train, I don't think is going to be making any money going up there. And I guess also, it's my belief that all the businesses there have removed their rail spurs. So these trains got to come off, and they have to be, you know, come off the track. So that all has to be reestablished. And also, this is to Lori, have you done any research on the environment, the economic impact that the Rails-to-Trails has had in other areas? Because that is an economic boost as well as a train is. And my question is always this. Because this is what we're doing today, do we have to convert all our open land to what's here today, the soup of the day, which is distribution centers? You need some, but the, we're not going to survive if we're one note. We need to have diverse development. And if you overdevelop too quickly, that's what's going to happen. We're having difficulty. We did overdevelop on our retail, and we are turning that around. But, you know, we don't necessarily always have to have new development. And once, you know, that train comes in, those trucks got to take it someplace else because they're not all going to be on the rail.
Councilwoman G, then Councilor Bosco.
Thank you. I'm not sure who this question should be directed to, but again, thank you, John, and Carol, and Tom, and Lori for being here to answer these questions. I'm hearing different potential businesses coming forward. At what point will we be soliciting, if you will, businesses? And if, in fact, that's the case, will we be going out to bid with, for these businesses? Or will they be maybe more than one opportunity for a freight-type business?
I, you know, I would just interject that it's very premature. I think that's why the Commissioner himself, Cindy, has said in his letter that they're going to extend it for a year. They want to have meetings with us and other stakeholders to consider, I quote him, "We will consider the economic benefits, advantages, and disadvantages, and any impacts to the region in regard to the freight line." So I don't think we have all of the answers. I would just echo, though, these primarily are decisions that the Department of Transportation would make. As the town attorney has stated to us, we have no legal standing to influence this decision. We, as we heard from Attorney Ritter, though, you, in your personal capacities, and even as councilpeople, at the right point, when we have all the information and say, you know what, I'm for both, I'm for one, or I'm for none. But we're early on in the process. We're gathering the information. I think it's very important. We've come together, I think, now for the first time. Carol, we met a year and a half ago. Nobody even knew about this freight line. I mean, this wasn't even an issue on the radar, right, John? And now we are coming and bringing into focus all the different pros and cons, and we will work. But really, this is, this is really going to be in the wheelhouse of the Department of Transportation, and it's federally guided. As he said, if you were to want to discontinue this, even if we did, even if the state DOT did, the federal government is the final arbiter. The Surface Transportation Board of the United States Department of Transportation makes this decision. So we'll gather the information, we'll become informed, we'll keep you up to date. We're going to immediately this week reach out, Carol, and John, and Tom, for another meeting with them to try to see where, where are we? What are you going to look for from this individual? What's your criteria in a year in regard to advantages and disadvantages? So in a year, we kind of know he's made it, or he hasn't. Are we going to do these on parallel paths, or one or the other, or both? So I think this is a great opportunity to let the public know that you're all concerned, you're all interested. And again, we're balancing the equities, aren't we? As we always do. Every project, none of them are unanimous. Some of them, some people are for, other folks aren't. And all we can do is bring you the best information to make the informed decision to do what's best for the most residents in the town. And we make our decision, and we move on. So that's what we're trying to do here. I think this has been hugely important, and it'll be up on our website tomorrow for all residents who didn't join us this evening to hear about the issues. And I think we framed the questions very well, and I'll turn it over for the additional questions.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Councilor Bosco.
To Carol, Tom, and John, I'd rather not see a train run through our neighborhood. But, that being said, I'm not against a train running through the area. What I would hope you guys can do is at least get something done. If it's not going to be the train, it's going to be a Rails-to-Trail, because that line just can't be abandoned for another 20 years. And that's, that's the problem. It neither needs to be used or discontinued, because right now, it's a terrible eyesore, and it's probably pretty dangerous, people going up on the trails, and it's just not a nice place. So all I can ask is, you guys, one way or another, you know, talk to the Department of Transportation, either, look at, can we, can, is the bridge repairable? Is it a possibility? If that's a possibility, that's fine. And then I just could tell you, on my opinion, if it's going to take town funds to do this, this Rails-to-Trail. Rails to Trail, I would much rather put the money into the Scannick River Park and start acquiring properties all down the Scannick River and make the beautiful Greenway that's been supposed to be built since 1980. You know, so that's just my opinion. I don't really care if the train goes. I don't care if the train doesn't. But I want something done. And hopefully, we can keep enough heat on all of this to get something done, either the train or something else. But where it's standing now, it just can't be. You know, if it wasn't the state of Connecticut, we'd be blading people on it. So please keep the heat on them and let's see if we can get something done. Thank you.
Can I quickly respond to that? All right, we got, sorry, two more questions. Councilor Angier, then I'll let you respond.
Hi. I fully support the trails, but I do have a question. Is there a rule of thumb, if you did have the freight line next to the trails, is there a proximity between the distance between them? I ride my bike up in Long Meadow at the Stebbins Reserve, and that train has to be 100 yards away. And my heart races every time I hear it go by. And I feel like it's too close to me, even though there's trees between us. So I'm just wondering if there's a rule of thumb how close they can be.
Sure. Well, I'm certainly no expert in that, and I welcome Tom and Carol. And by the way, I want to compliment Carol in particular for working so tirelessly on moving the Rails to Trails. I wasn't trying to undermine your argument, Carol, whatsoever, but you have been such a stalwart champion for well over a year regarding this. I would guess that in its infinite desire to avoid any potentiality for liability, that the State Department of Transportation, in conjunction with federal authorities, would have a minimum distance that would enhance and protect the safety of anyone using a Rails to Trail system. I'm with you. You don't need to be super close to a railroad if it's zip and by, especially depending on how fast it's going, even if it's a slow, giant 50-car, you know, industrial train. I mean, I don't live that far away from the rail line, and I hear it very distinctly. And it's way away. So if you're like biking or walking, you know, I'm sure they have some rule of thumb. I just personally don't know it. I'm really looking forward to working with the town manager, and he'll put together whoever should attend the first meeting so that we can get the ball rolling with myself, Carol, and Tom. And, you know, I agree with the town manager. This is just a fact-finding portion. But, you know, it's a resource and it's got great potentiality. I agree with Councilman Bosco, though. To just leave it fallow for so long is not a good thing. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Mike, I could just answer, Lori. We have invited the Deputy Commissioner, Garrett Ucalito, who is going to be coming the first meeting in June. And he would be the perfect source to ask that. In a preliminary conversation, he echoed exactly what John said. You'd have to look at what the rights away are, how wide is the property? And in some areas, you might have to have a barrier between the two. So he's going to be the right person to ask those questions to. And again, he's coming in June, so gather your questions if we have any in advance, like we often do. You can get them in my office. I'll remind you in May, and we'll submit them to him in advance as well.
I was just curious as to where East Windsor is in all this? Because it seems like we're the actual link between the North and the South. And it would just be great to have that path there.
I don't know, Carol or Tom, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I can, I can answer as much as I know. Talking to First Selectmen, he actually had, him and the select board themselves had a perfect spot where they wanted to end the actual Rails to Trail. It was in a heavily populated shopping area and eatery area. So they had a very distinct spot where they thought it would be perfect end. Because as Donna referenced, it's a perfect economic development piece of the pie, if you will, for these small businesses. So, and I don't, I don't want to, if there's any other questions, but I do want to make a couple of quick points.
Yeah, Carol, sir, we have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Representative Arnone, you had a comment? All right.
Yep. I actually want to touch upon these one thing, too, which I'm a little, a little taken back by East Windsor. East Windsor has the train service to what they're, basically their industrial park is. That train service, it's, they take about 125 trains a year there and take about 17,000 tractor-trailers off the road. That's how much freight comes into that plant. So it's viable. It's a very viable line up until East Windsor. And for East Windsor to say, hey, we're going to shut the door on you, I have issue with that. And I would, I would certainly protest to East Windsor to shutting the freight line off for Enfield. And that has, that has its consequences. Thank you.
All right. So Carol, we'll let you have a finishing comment. Everyone have a finishing comment. Representative, Councilor Riley.
Yeah, so, I mean, I definitely don't want to step in the middle of, you know, stopping people from, you know, running their business the way that they should. But I would just ask that you guys keep Enfield informed as best as we can so that we can give the residents that live abutting those tracks as much lead time as possible to know that this would be something that's actually happening in their backyard. I mean, because I have, I have a plethora of questions about, you know, biohazards, leaking cars, how that affects the soil and their yards and quality of life. But those are all questions that I'm going to ask, you know, the expert from DOT. But I would just ask that you guys please just, you know, give the Enfield residents as much lead time as you can so that they can be aware of, you know, what is or is not going to be happening.
So what we're going to do is we're going to gather questions by, say, the 15th of May. Every council or residence that matters as well can send us questions. We will gather them for the meeting in June. And I know there's going to be complicated, very detailed questions from some of you and from me as well. So we'll do that by the 15th for the Commissioner. And, you know, and again, I want to give each representative a chance to finish. Carol, just one question. Is the leasing process, I'm assuming it's not a bid, right, process? They just basically, they don't, there's not a bidding process to lease, lease that line out?
No. So the gentleman that they granted the yearly lease to is the same gentleman that's had it for the last 25 years.
All right. So there's no, there's no, like, formal bid or request for bids or any of that? Okay. And again, I just will say this, and, you know, I'm going to save my comments for the 7th, but, I mean, when you talk about economic development, it comes in many fashions and forms. And quality of life is a huge economic development indicator in any town. I don't care where it is. And I agree with Deputy Mayor Susak, there comes a point sometimes when we overdevelop. And there's some, there's some cities in the state you can go see what happens when you overdevelop. And unfortunately, those industries no longer are viable and what it does to a neighborhood. So I just, for me, quality of life is a huge economic development issue for me. And I hear from residents all the time who go up to East Long Meadow and say, why can't we do that in Enfield? I get that question all the time. And it's, if you've been, I'm sure some of the people here go up to East Long Meadow and use that trail. So that's my position. I'm not going to, I understand at this point I'll be quiet on some other things. We'll save it for the 7th. I have some very detailed questions that I'm going to, that I'm going to ask, especially on the lease itself. I have some very big concerns on how that lease is construed, especially if it's taxpayer money that's being used to fix that rail, which, again, I have a problem with that. And I don't care if it's federal money, that's still taxpayer money. And it's, you know, a lot of us pay federal taxes as well. So there's a lot of different things here that are rolling into this that I think people need answers. And it's not clear, I mean, it is, and it's interesting, it can be as clear-cut as a rail versus a trail, but there's also a business aspect to this, meaning the deal itself, that needs to be made public, in my opinion. And I know, Carol, that you folks will work on it. And I'll stop there. And in closing, I'll start, again, Representative Hall, then Representative Arnold, and Senator Kissel, your closing remarks. Representative Hall, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things that I kind of missed in the first, in my first opportunity to speak. So the, I'll start at the top. So basically, I ran a survey. It was very, you know, informal survey on Facebook and, of course, eBlasts, and got a lot of feedback from the survey. We came out, it was a simple question. I think there's been some implications that you can stack a survey certain way, while this was just a black and white survey. One question, would you support a Rails to Trail along the freight line on the eastern part of town? And 75% of the folks that weighed in absolutely support the Rails to Trail. Now, keep in mind that this is in, this freight line goes through my district. So the people that were, you know, answering were a lot of our district that lives in the 59th. So I think for me, I certainly would want to hear from the residents that live in that district that that line runs through their backyard. So I think that's got to be a priority, I think, to hear from those folks. And then in regards to the industrial zoning out along the freight line, I think it's important to note that that industrial zone has been there for the last 25 years that this gentleman has owned the freight line lease. So there's been a 25-year lease from this gentleman. He has produced nobody in the town of Enfield in the last 25 years that's entrusted. That land that we're talking about, that's all industrial zoned, has been there for the last 25 years. So I just kind of want to remind folks of that. I did get an actual letter of request from the folks that are looking for $10 million from the Bonding Commission to use on that freight line. So that came, I'm sure Representative Arnone got the same mailing. They're looking for $10 million for the freight lines from the state of Connecticut. So there would be definitely money that they're requesting, and that is just for this bonding year. So, and then as far as the money for the Rails to Trail, I did have a conversation with our good congressional representative, Courtney, who, we chatted a little bit about the money that may be coming out from Congress with these shovel-ready projects. And he said he is aware that there is money, of course, for the Rails and Trails projects. So that I just wanted to mention. I'm really excited about the opportunity that we have here. And I want to, I just want to kind of look back a little bit. In the 1990s, when I sat in your position right now, we had asked about this. We had asked DOT about the Rails to Trail program along this freight line. And at that time, they had just signed this lease. And they told us, well, we just signed a 25-year lease. You're going to have to wait 25 years and see what happens. So fast forward 25 years, and here we are with this fantastic opportunity to improve that whole area of town with a quality of life issue. And if you look at our own plan of conservation and development, one of the number-one things that is in that plan of conservation and development is passive recreation. And that's what this would enable us to do. So it fits well with our plan of conservation and development. And I just want to clarify one point on the East Windsor Rails to Trail. I don't think it was East Windsor's intent to block anything in Enfield. I think their intent was to collaborate with Enfield to do a joint Rails to Trail that would run right up to the Mass line. So I don't think they're looking to block anything. That I know for a fact is not their intent. But they were very happy with the thought of joining the Rails to Trail and having a 13-plus-mile bike path that would run into the state of Massachusetts. So that's, that's where they're standing on this. So I think that's, I think that's everything. I want to thank you guys for having us tonight. It's been a 25-year wait for this opportunity, and I just don't want to see us lose this opportunity. And I certainly want to make, I want to say a big shout out to everybody that's emailed, called, in support of this Rails to Trail effort. We've got a huge, I probably have got more emails and texts on this issue going. This would be a fantastic addition to the town. So thanks, everybody, for hearing me, and I appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you, Representative Riley. Thank you for being here. Representative Arnone, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Just going to end up with saying, I'm very excited to hear the council is so pro these biking and hiking trails. I think this is fantastic. Enfield lacks them. We have a state-funded project now on the boards. The state paid for all the engineering for a bike path in the town. I think it's time for the town to start moving forward on these trails. They're not going to be fully paid by the state. We're going to have to chip in some taxpayer dollars to achieve these. And that's where we are with the one that's on paper right now. So I'm, I'm still, I'm 100% behind a Rails, a trail alongside the rail. If that's the fact with the future of it, I'm, I'll help everywhere I can to find funds for that and to get the trails that we have on paper, to get those funded locally so we can put them together and start connecting up to the Suffield Trail. And that's ready to get connected to canal right now. We have all the, all the state has put money into that, and we just need the town to commit to their share of it, too. So thank you for having me tonight. I'm really excited to see that, you know, we're all in the same boat. We're all pro hiking and biking. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Arnone. Again, we thank you for being here. And again, in closing, Senator Kissel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and members of the town council, town manager, and other esteemed guests here this evening. I'll be mercifully brief. You all know everything that I know thus far. In fact, the whole development portion of this project came to light to me like in the last week or so. So it started with me walking that trail with Scott Cope and Mike Emmons, some other folks, and working with Carol, focusing on the Rails to Trail. Now, it's got a lot of moving parts here. So I believe in total transparency. As soon as I learn anything more, I will make sure the town manager gets that information so we can distribute it to everybody on the council. Look forward to helping to set up meetings so that we can gather information. And then it's going to be up to your wisdom as to which direction, if any, you want to go, one way or another way or no way. It's really your call. And then it goes to the Department of Transportation and the federal authorities. So I just want to be a resource, but I will be as transparent as humanly possible. I'm here to listen, not to direct you guys. You guys know your business. And you, you work really tirelessly for the town of Enfield, and you do a fabulous job, each and every one of you. And I just, I'm here for you. That's all.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Again, thank you all. Again, thank you, Representative Arnone, Representative Hall, Senator Kissel, Beener, very robust discussion. And we look forward, again, the Commissioner will be here in June, the June 1st, June meeting, and I apologize, I think it's the 7th, I believe, off the top of my head. So we ask any resident who has questions to send them to us, or you can send them to the town manager's office. But if you'd like to send them through us, we're more than welcome. And of course, councilors, if you have any questions, please have them. We'll shoot for the 15th of May. You can send them to your, you can send them either directly to Chris, or you can send them through your caucuses, whatever works easily. And so we'll have the Commissioner plenty of time to answer the questions, you know, be prepared to answer the questions before the meeting. And so it's, again, a productive meeting in June. With that, I thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate that's the end of the special meeting.